Good evening. Welcome to Sheffield 2025 Annual Town Meeting. Will you please join me and rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, thank you for being here. We have a great turnout. I appreciate that very much. Town meeting is where the rubber hits the road for town operations. I got a quick question for you. Quick show of hands. How many of you either work for the town, paid or unpaid, serve on a town board, elected, appointed, or volunteer in any capacity with a town department? How many of you? Show of hands. Thank you so much. Check that out. That's awesome. Thank you for the service because you are all the ones, the people up front, but all of you are who, the ones who really help make the town operate in a smooth fashion. Thank you for your service. I want to give also a quick shout out to Nicole Parker and Nicole Robarge. When you're reading through your town report, their names were inadvertently omitted from the town employee list, so thank you to them. And by the way, you do have an elected town moderator too, so a couple of small omissions that I wanted to acknowledge. Some introductions. First, our select board. Our Chair, Nadine Haver. I have to take note. This is her last annual town meeting. She's stepping down. A selectman, thank you for her years of service on the select board. Bob Kilmer and Lee Butala also on the select board. Our legal counsel tonight from KP Law, Jonathan Eichman. Thank you, Jonathan. Finance Committee, our chairperson, Collins Smith. Will Conklin, Nadine Haver, she's going to stick around for that one. Dave Macy and Ken Smith. And then to our town clerk, Felicity Joyce and Nicole Parker, all the staff who have orchestrated the logistics here tonight. Welcome to Arthur from Meridia Solutions for his assistance using our new clicker for the first annual town meeting. And then last, but not least, our town administrator, Rhonda La Bombard. This is her last annual town meeting with us. She will be retiring soon. Maybe, maybe, maybe Lee says to me. She, she has been trying to retire for at least six months. It's been a tough search process. Our chairman for the select board would like to say a few words.
So, on the behalf of the select board, I'd like to acknowledge the many years of service given to our town by our town administrator, Rhonda La Bombard. She was hired in 2006 as the assistant to the then-town administrator, Bob Whites. She carried on with Joe Kellogg, and then she was hired by the select board when Joe retired to be our town administrator in 2011. What a great decision it was for that board, I truly believe. I started working with Rhonda in 2014 and have never worked with anyone so knowledgeable, professional, and dedicated to our community. After a two-year break, I came back on the board in 2022, and Rhonda told me that she was considering retired, and I said, "No, you can't leave me here without you." And we had a good chuckle, but I understood that sometimes that's the time that's coming. Last September, she told us she was retiring in December. We tried to find a replacement. We did not have a good turnout for applicants. We were competing with several other towns who were looking for town managers who make a lot more money than town administrators. So, we went back out after the first of the year, and we ended up doing some interviews. The board could not come to a meeting of the minds on the final two candidates, so we asked Rhonda to stay through budget season, and she's here, thank goodness. But she has told the board that this is the last round of interview she's going through, so it's going to be now or never. So, before we, you know, let her go, I just wanted everyone to have an opportunity to give her a round of applause for her professionalism, her experience, and her understanding of the complex world of municipal government. This job is not for the faint of heart, or the weak, or the inexperienced. So, with that, I ask for a round of applause for our town administrator.
And I want to say, I was really, I take great pride that I was on that board that hired Rhonda when Joe Kellogg was leaving, so I appreciate that very much. A couple of housekeeping matters. There's 31 warrant items. We will be using clickers tonight. There'll be a little bit of a demo going on. If for any reason we do need our colored cards, you have them. Okay, you've, you've got that there. So, any amendments are submitted in writing for the moderator and the town clerk. Once we're voting, please stay seated when we're voting, especially if there has to be a hand count. We're hoping not, but if there is. No clapping after a vote unless the moderator determines an anonymous, uh, an anonymous, a unanimous vote. Excuse me. If you wish to speak, do please approach the microphone. It's a three-minute time limit. There will be a timer on the screen, so you will know your time. If you need to come back to the podium, please share new information. Need your name, your address, either show your orange card, or, you know, we used to have a slot in our clicker. We don't have that, so put it in your pocket or someplace where I can see it. If I can't see it, I will ask you for it. What else? Are we ready for a clicker demo? Okay, I'll turn it over to Nicole and Arthur for a moment. We use this at a special town meeting. This is the first annual town meeting that we're using it. We're testing the clickers. So, you've got yes and no. You don't have to hit a number or anything.
[inaudible] Okay, so you, you can see in the green, there's a 1A for yes or a 28.
When you, when you click it, I'm just doing it myself now, in the little digital box, you'll either see 1 or 2. If you don't see 1 or 2 in the box, it means your vote was not recorded. So, you know, make sure when you hit yes or no, you can see that number. So, that's, that's the piece. All right. And then what you also see across the top in green here, it's a majority vote, not 2/3 or anything like that. It'll tell you the result that it's passed. It'll tell you the status is closed when the timer is gone. And remind me, how, how long is our, our timing? Is it 20 seconds, 30 seconds for a vote? I meant to ask you today, I forgot. 20 seconds, okay. So, within that time, you can change your vote, but the last one you record will be the one that counts. All right. Anything else? Okay, so we are ready with that. Oh, let's see. And then the last little housekeeping piece, when we're done with our clickers at the end, please do see the staff. Don't just drop your clicker on the table. Make sure you turn it into everybody. Everyone is numbered, so they have to account for all of those, so please do that. All right, so as our first order of business, I will move to dispense with the town clerk's reading of the warrant. All in favor? Maybe I should have a second first. Lee, you want to second that? Second it, sorry. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. We will dispense with the town clerk's reading of the warrant. All in favor?
[affirmative]
Any opposed? All right, passed unanimously. Great. Okay, on to the warrant. Small spot with a lot of papers. Bear with me. Okay. Article number one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as listed below and as may be amended necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2026. I'm not going to read through all of these for the sake of time, but if you have one, you wish to have a hold, I'll give you a few seconds, take a peek. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $4,758,035 for the purpose of funding those budgets listed in the warrant necessary to defray the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2026.
The motion's been made and seconded to raise and appropriate $4,758,035 for the purpose of funding those budgets as listed in the warrant for fiscal year 2026. Any discussion? Hearing none, the vote will open. Are we ready? Very good. You may vote. The voting has closed, and it's passed 165 to 8. Thank you very much. On to Article 2. To see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2026 as required by Chapter 41, Section 108, and Chapter 71, Section 52 of the General Laws. Moderator, $300. Selectmen chairperson, $3,338. Selectmen, two members, at $2,782 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, four members, at $1,000 each, or take any action relative thereto.
I move to fix the compensation of the following elected officers of the town for fiscal year 2026 as required by Chapter 41, Section 108, and Chapter 71, Section 52 of the General Laws. Moderator, $300. Selectmen chairman, $3,338. Selectmen, two members, at $2,782 each. Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, four members, at $1,000 each.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will prepare to vote. The motion has passed 157 to 11. Thank you very much. To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget for fiscal year 2026, and vote to raise and appropriate $7,944,754 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, oh, Kathy Orlando. I move to amend the town's assessed share of the fiscal year 26 Southern Berkshire Regional School District operating and transportation budget to $7,897,530 based on the school committee's vote on April 29th due to an increase in state revenues, a decrease in anticipated expenditures, and a change in applied excess and deficiencies amounts.
I was told that, oh, so it just means I move to...
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Kathy, little communication here with town council. You moved to amend. You're simply going to move the town's assessed share.
Okay.
Scratch that word.
Okay.
Amend.
I changed that.
Are you, if you're okay with that adjustment?
Yes.
For council purposes?
Yes.
And seconded? Let me see.
Yes.
Lee seconded that. Okay, that will become our main motion, that we're changing that number from the warrant. And it was seconded, yes? Yeah. Okay. Discussion?
Hi, I thought I would be able to...
Uh, excuse me, you need to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry.
Name and street.
Donna Parsons, 645 Berkshire School Road.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. I thought I would be able to motion that we separate the operation budget from the transportation budget, but I was told that I cannot. So, I will be voting no on Article 3 because the transportation contracts have not been approved by the school committee, and I am asking my fellow citizens to turn down Article 3. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Peter Duma, 94 Pike Road West.
Thank you, Peter.
I also am not in favor of passing this budget. I think the parents of the school all over the towns that it serves deserve better than what is, we're looking at coming in. So, we need to do something about making it the way it was the last 49 years, where we could depend on the buses, the drivers, and everything to get our kids to school and home safely in a timely manner. So, if voting no is going to help change that, then I vote no too.
Okay, thank you. Keep in mind, we're voting on the bottom line for the operating budget, that any of the contractual issues will be taken up by the school committee. Is there any other discussion? We do have an amended, I did a little bit of quick math from, from the warrant, this is a decrease of $46,224. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the budget? When our screen is up. Please take note. It was a majority, uh, wait a minute, 2/3?
[inaudible]
The problem, Jonathan, I'm going to need your help. Because we corrected that motion to be the main motion, it's a majority vote. Okay, so because we, originally, most amendments are a 2/3 vote, that's what this confusion is. Okay, so these would be then majority votes, and it did pass 87 to 81. So, I apologize for the confusion with the communication here. It was a last-minute change. Nicole, you'll let me know when we're ready. Okay, the status is closed, we have voted, so we're ready for the next article. All right. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt for fiscal year 2026, and vote to raise and appropriate $160,225 to pay the town's assessed share of that debt, or take any other action relative thereto. Can you want to identify yourself?
Okay, Kathy Orlando again. And correct me if I do this wrong. I move the town's assessed share of the fiscal year 26 Southern Berkshire Regional School District roof and boiler debt to $160,214 based on the school committee's vote on April 29th due to an increase in state revenues, a decrease in anticipated expenditures, and a change in applied excess and deficiency amounts.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the roof and boiler debt for the school district? Seeing none, we'll wait for our slide to come up. And this again will be a majority. I originally had told Nicole it was a motion to amend. Very good. Look at that. She's quick. She's got that changed. Okay. All right, and status is open, so please do use your clickers and vote. And this article has passed 159 to 18. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Article 5. To see if the town will vote to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2026, and vote to raise and appropriate $176,038 to pay the town's assessed share of that budget, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to approve the Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2026, and to vote to raise and appropriate $176,038 to pay for the town's assessed share of that budget.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the capital budget for fiscal year 26 at Is there any discussion? Kathy?
So, do I do this as an amendment?
You could do it as an amendment. It's only a difference of $13.
Right. So, does it not need to be made?
Not necessarily. I mean, where's our superintendent? I think our superintendent was looking for consistency as all the towns were doing that, so if you want to make that motion to amend, we can do that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, and so this is a motion to amend, not...
Yeah, it's a motion to amend.
All right. Then, I move to amend the town's assessed share of the fiscal year 26 Southern Berkshire Regional School District capital budget to $176,025 based on the school committee's vote on April 29th due to an increase in state revenues, a decrease in anticipated expenditures, and a change in applied excess and deficiency amounts.
Do I hear a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay, so we will vote on the amendment first, and in this case, we're preparing for that vote. It's an amendment, so we will, it'll be 2/3 for the amendment, and then majority for the main motion.
Majority for both.
Majority for both?
Yep.
Oh, I thought all amendments are not...
No, it's even in the book.
Okay. Newbie moderator, what can I say? All right. Very good. So, first let us vote on the amendment.
[inaudible]
What's that? We're voting to amend. We're voting to amend, so that the number would be 17625. Yeah, that's the amendment. We're good. Okay? All right, so we have an amendment, and we are ready. Yes? Now, will this come up also as an amendment with the bars that say open and closed? Okay, all right. All right, when this says open? All right, it's open. We will now vote on the amendment, please, the changed dollar amount. Okay, the motion has passed 155 to 23. So, that is our amendment, and now we will vote on the main motion to amend the town's assessed share, uh, excuse me, to approve the assessed share of the capital budget. So, once we are ready, that is... And so now it would go back, I believe it would show the 17638? That is the main motion.
No, 25, it's been amended.
It's been amended. Can you share that with us? We should have put him in a room. We should let us sit here.
Okay, so this is correct, Nicole, the way you've got it. The amendment passed, so this dollar amount is what we would see in our new motion, in the main motion. Okay? Very good. Let me know when you're ready. Thank you for your patience between clickers and amendments. Yes. We're ready. Okay.
[inaudible]
The motion has passed 153 to 25. Okay. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $55,000 to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 26, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $55,000 to pay for vocational education tuition in fiscal year 2026.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to raise and appropriate $55,000 for vocational education for FY '26. Is there any discussion?
Yes, thank you. Sarah Sickett, 254 Salisbury Road. I have a question, actually. We offer here an FFA program. We offer vet med. We offer agricultural science studies as well as biology. Our kids go to state convention. We raise fish in our aquaculture center. And I know that we have vocational education to the north that doesn't cost us anything in Massachusetts. I guess I'm wondering two things. Why we pay for vocational education when there's options offered in Massachusetts further north? Since parents provide their own transportation, why do we pay to go out of state when it's free to enter in Massachusetts? And my, so that's one question, why we don't offer it in-state while we're paying as a town to go out of state? And my second question is, what is our guarantee that the students who are seeking out-of-state education are receiving a vocational education and not a general high school education that they couldn't receive here? Because you... Because you can attend that high school without taking vocational programs. So I'm wondering, as a town, how we're ensuring that if we're paying for them to go out of state, they're actually seeking a degree in things they can't get here? And the second half of my question is, why aren't they attending schools in Massachusetts that are free if they're specifically going to vocational ed? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
So we allow these students to go to Connecticut because it is cheaper for the town. It would cost us more to tuition them to a Massachusetts vocational high school. And, we are also obligated to pay the transportation costs. But years ago, when it was determined that these students could go over the state line into Connecticut, the parents and the selectmen had an agreement that if it was going out, if students were going out of state, that parents agreed to transport them out of state. They have to be enrolled in the ag, and the school sends us an invoice that states that they're in the agricultural program.
And as I recall, don't the students kind of do like an annual report? Or when they're graduating? I know previously I'd seen reports from students, not so much now? Okay. I recall that in the past.
Most of the students do send in a letter each year requesting to continue their education at that school. And many of them give an update of where they are academically and what their goals are in the future.
Okay, that was what I was thinking of, thank you, Rhonda. Any other questions on Article 6? Okay, then we will prepare to vote. Status is open, please use your clickers. Status is closed, and it has passed 140 to 35. Onto Article 7. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or transfer from available funds, $204,100 for the disposal and management of solid waste, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other action to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to raise from Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund revenues $204,100 for the disposal and management of solid waste, and to authorize the Select Board to take any action to effectuate the purpose of this article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years for such solid waste disposal and management.
The motion has been made and seconded for Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. And your status is open, so please do use your clickers. Status is closed, and the motion has passed 155 to 11. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter 90 of the General Laws, to pay such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with the maintenance, repair, and construction of town ways and bridges, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to accept funds being provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Chapter 90 of the General Laws, to pay for such costs as allowed by appropriate legislation in connection with maintenance, repair, and construction of the town ways and bridges.
I second that motion.
The motion has been made and seconded to accept funds provided by the Commonwealth for Chapter 90. Discussion?
Kristen Hyatt, Rhode Hill Road. Just a question. Will this include repair of the, what's now a one-lane bridge on County Road, which is really an accident waiting to happen?
No, this will not repair the bridge on County Road. The bridge on County Road will be replaced by Mass DOT. That is not a town project. This will be for paving some of the roads that are in disrepair this year.
Are there any other questions? Then we should prepare to vote. Clicker status is open. The voting is closed, and the motion has passed 174 to 5. Onto Article 9. To see if the town will vote to authorize the appointment of members of the Board of Selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 268A, Section 21A of the General Laws, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the appointment of members of the Board of Selectmen to any office or position under its supervision at no additional compensation in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 268A, Section 21A of the General Laws.
The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Sarah Sickitt, 254 Salisbury. This might be a quick question for council. I read this every year, and I'm just hoping you can clear it up. According to Section 21A, the Conflict of Interest section, it says that you must wait 30 days after finishing serving as a selectman before you're eligible to appoint to such a position, or you must receive approval for the appointment at the annual town meeting. We are here. You must submit a resume or otherwise indicate an interest in such a position while being on the board, but they have to be... It says, "or you must receive approval for that appointment" at the annual town meeting. So, do I take that to mean that you would have to announce here what position you were interested in for that appointment?
I'll defer to the table.
John Eichman, Town Counsel. No, I would not interpret it that way. This is simply to authorize those boards to make those appointments, but there's no announcement required for this vote.
Okay. Just, I always get concerned because it's under the Conflict of Interest laws for a reason, being able to appoint yourself to a position that you're also in charge of. So, I'm wondering how we publicize those as a town. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Anything else?
So, all of the positions that are appointed are advertised at the selectmen's meeting. Especially this time of year, they're getting ready to make the annual appointments. So there is a list of positions that will be up, and they'll be soliciting letters from anyone interested to fill those positions. If we don't get a letter or an interest in filling one of those positions, we have to appoint someone to ensure that the board can go on and do its business. And sometimes that may be a member of the Select Board if no one else applies. Yes, we keep the list of vacancies on the website up throughout most of the year.
Okay, any other questions on that article? All right, then we will prepare to vote. Article 9 is open. The Article 9 has passed 136 to 35. Article 10. To see if the town, excuse me, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and perk test witnesses for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 21A for fiscal year 2026, and to set the salary for those positions at $75 per Title V inspections and $150 per perk tests in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 4A, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Health to employ any of its members as Title V and perk test net witnesses for septic system inspections and sanitation inspections under its supervision in accordance with General Laws, C268A, Section 21A, for fiscal year 2026, and to set the salary for these positions at $75 per Title V inspections and $150 per perk tests in accordance with the provisions of General Ledger, Chapter 41, Section 4A.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded on Article 10 regarding Board of Health perk tests and Title V work. Any questions? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Vote is open. Voting is closed, and the motion has passed 154 to 14. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be acquired through the foreclosure of tax title, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to authorize the treasurer-collector to sell, with the approval of the Select Board, any parcel or parcels of real estate which have been or may be required through the foreclosure of tax title.
The motion has been made and seconded on Article 11. Questions?
Peter Dumas, 94 Pike Road West. I'm just curious, how many parcels are there in Sheffield?
We have our treasurer in the back row. Monique, do you know how many you currently have in tax title?
And this has nothing to do with the property the town owns down at Pughan Street? Okay, thank you.
Okay, for those that didn't hear, our treasurer-collector, she said there were about 75 properties. Did I hear you right, Monique?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we will prepare to vote on Article 11. Status is open. Article 11 has passed 157 to 15. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, $77,000 to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 6 of the General Laws, known as the Reserve Fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $77,000 from free cash to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 6 of the General Laws, known as the Reserve Fund.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move to transfer $77,000 from free cash to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures. And this is known as our Reserve Fund.
Hi, Ruby Littman, 143 Berkshire School Road. I'm just curious, how much is currently in the Reserve Fund?
So the Reserve Fund is set. If you approved this tonight, it would be $77,000. And if we don't use any of that, it goes away for the next year. So this sets a new amount, it does not accumulate.
Thank you. I think it's safe to say, Madam Administrator, that anything that's unused just rolls back to free cash. That's right, so then it's up for another year. Okay. Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll prepare to vote. Article 12. The motion has passed 165 to 7. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, $750 to the Emergency Response Fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $750 from free cash to the Emergency Response Fund.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to transfer $750 from free cash for the Emergency Response Fund. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Voting is open. Article 13 has passed 176 to 8. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $15,000 to compensate firefighters for training, or take any other action relative thereto.
Madam Moderator, I happily move to raise and appropriate $15,000 to compensate firefighters for training.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. $15,000 for compensation of firefighters' training. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. The motion has passed 168 to 9. And I'll just publicly make a quick commentary to say thank you to all of our firefighters. Having been one of the neighbors close to that butternut fire last year, we have great appreciation for all you do. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $5,000 for financial services, including but not limited to audits, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move to raise and appropriate $5,000 for financial services as written in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded for Article 15. $5,000 for financial services. Any questions? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Please vote on Article 15. The motion has passed, 158 to 16. Article 16, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, as most recently amended to establish fiscal year 2026 spending limits for the revolving funds as set forth below." And as I will say, as printed in the warrant, you have them at the top of your third page.
Madam Moderator, I move to establish fiscal year 2026 revolving fund spending limits as written in the warrant.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded regarding the revolving funds accounts. Any questions? Hearing none, we will prepare to vote. Your clickers are open. The motion has passed, 156 to 12. Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $300,000 to purchase and equip a plow truck for the Highway Department, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $300,000 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of the highway truck as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to Article 17 to transfer $300,000 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of a highway truck as written in the warrant. Any questions? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Please vote on Article 17. Motion has passed, 149 to 23. Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs, repairs at the transfer station, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $10,000 from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for recycling programs, repairs at the transfer station as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to transfer $10,000 from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for repairs at the state transfer station as described. Any questions? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Voting has closed, the article has passed, 158 to 10. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $5,000 for repairs to town-owned cemeteries, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
I move to transfer $5,000 from free cash for town-owned cemetery repairs as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to transfer $5,000 from free cash for town-owned cemetery repairs as written in the warrant. Any questions? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote again. Motion has passed, 164 to 7. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $106,973 for the sixth-year payment of a fire truck lease, purchase financing agreement, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $106,973 from free cash for the sixth payment of the fire truck lease purchasing financing agreement.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to transfer $106,973 from free cash for the sixth-year payment of the fire truck lease purchase finance agreement. Questions? We will prepare to vote. Status is open. Motion has passed, 161 to 13. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $75,000 for town buildings repairs, improvements, equipping, and furnishings to include but not limited to the town hall, library, senior center, highway garage, and police station, including any design and engineering costs and any other costs and expenses incidental and related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $75,000 from free cash for town building repairs as written in the warrant.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer $75,000 from free cash for town building repairs as described in the warrant. Any questions? We will prepare to vote. Motion has passed, 163 to 12. Article 22, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $25,000 to purchase information technology hardware, software, and services, including any incidental or related costs and expenses, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any action to effectuate the purpose of the article, including but not limited to entering into agreements in excess of three years, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the purchase of technology, information, hardware, software, and services as written in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the purchase of information technology as described in the warrant. Any questions? We will prepare to vote. Article 22 is open. The motion has passed, 156 to 14. Article 23, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $25,000 for the repair of dry hydrants, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the repair of dry hydrants as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to transfer $25,000 from free cash for the repair of dry hydrants as described in the warrant. Any questions? We will prepare to vote. Article 23 is open. Article 23 has passed, 164 to 9. Article 24, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $30,000 for a tree management program, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $30,000 from free cash for the purpose of a tree management program as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to transfer $30,000 from free cash for the purpose of a tree management program as written in the warrant. Questions? Discussion?
I wanted you to ask first. Tom Ingersoll, 203, Veely, two quick comments and a question in less than two minutes. Number one, thank you to my neighbors for allocating this. This is a huge step forward, and I think we did it for the first time last year compared to budgets in the past. Grossly inadequate for the hard-working people to have to deal with tree issues. And I promise you, as an arborist, there are many, many more to come. Second thing is, I encourage the board to itemize the presence of a tree warden in our community. You may not all know this, but we're actually required in this state to have a tree warden. And there is a person, happens to be our road superintendent, who is responsible for that budget. And if I'm right, this $30,000 is at that person's discretion. My question is, could you just clarify, I can't help but notice that the article is a little bit different than the nice, bold clarification below where the word "maintain" is used. And that makes me think that maybe we would be able to spend a little bit of this taking care of some of our existing trees, instead of just taking down the ones that are poised to smash our cars. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Tom.
You're right, that was the intent when they sent money aside last year, was to use it for removals, maintaining, or even replanting if there were some that were moved along the roadsides, and maybe set them back a little bit with younger trees that don't need so much care.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll prepare to vote on Article 24. Voting is open. Article 24 is closed and has passed by 167 to 8. Article 25, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $25,000 for services from South County Connector Transit Services, including any incidental and related costs and expenses, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer $25,000 from free cash for services from South County Connector Transit Services as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded on Article 25 regarding South County Connector, $25,000 from free cash. Any questions about that program? Seeing none, we'll prepare to vote. And of course, the voting is open. Article 25 has passed, 163 to 12. Article 26, "To see if the town will vote to approve the following general bylaw," Chapter 16, "Community Preservation Committee," as written in the warrant. Several pages worth.
I'm very grateful that it's written in the warrant. I move to approve the Community Preservation Committee bylaw as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Community Preservation Committee bylaw as written in the warrant. Discussion?
Yes, I see that under... Let's try this. Okay.
You want to identify yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Laura Gronfeld, and I live in Sheffield.
Your street?
My street is Veely.
Thank you.
Okay. Under the section called "Community Needs Study," it lists a lot of boards and commissions.
Yeah, what number is that? What are you looking?
Number 26. It's the next page over top of the next page. Page 10, if that helps.
Oh, Section 1 there where it's establishing, is that what you're talking about?
No.
Section 2, paragraph 1.
On page 10, the next...
Oh, Section 2, paragraph 1. Okay.
At the top, it says, "Section 2 duties, Community Needs Study." And it lists a whole lot of boards and commissions that would be consulted for that study. I'd like to see the Commission on Disabilities added to that. I'm a former member of the commission, and I think there are a lot of times when we should be consulted, and we haven't been. And I think that this is a wonderful place for us to be involved. Well, I'm not with them anymore, but anyway.
Are you making that as an amendment, or a suggestion, or...?
I don't know the legalities of all this, so...
Well, it won't change unless you make an amendment.
I'd like to make an amendment. I have to put it in writing?
Yeah, we need it in writing. We need a second, and we need it in writing. It's easy.
Then I can't make an amendment. I'd like to make a suggestion.
Okay.
Unless you want me to sit here and write it down.
Yeah, you can make an amendment. You would move to amend the article to add the Commission on Disability to that paragraph and specify where you want it added.
Okay.
Okay, I move to amend, and all the other things he said. It's a little difficult for me to hear because it's muffly, and I'm deaf in one ear, so I have to work at it. But what he said...
So it sounds like our council suggested we amend that Section 2, number 1, the committees that will be consulted, and we will add the Commission on Disabilities. Please. All right. And was that seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, very good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, then we will prepare to... I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, what? Okay. We will still need you to write that out, Laura. You got a scrap of paper somewhere? Just that you want to amend to add. Well, do we need it before we do the vote, Nicole? Yeah, because she wants to make that amendment on the screen. Very good. Can we add it right after Housing Commission? It's the list of all of the boards? Nicole, will that work for you? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Nadine. Yeah. Pretty straightforward, but we'll get it up on the screen that way. Yeah.
Ms. Moderator, while you're waiting for that, could I ask a question on the same item?
Please, you want to identify yourself again?
Yes, Tom Ingersoll again. Very excited about this. There's reference in several places to the Community Preservation Fund, but it's unclear where that is or what that is. I understand that the committee can apply for funds, and I assume grants and things like that, but is there a fund? Does it exist, and how much is it at the moment?
Currently, there is no fund. This will go into effect July 1st. There will be a surcharge on your property tax, and that will go into that fund. So right now, it is zero.
Okay, so we have the amendment that is up on the screen, so that they're going to be adding the Commission on Disabilities, and that again is on Section 2, Number 1 Duties. It's at the bottom of Page 4 in your warrant. So that Commission on Disabilities will be added to the list of boards and commissions that will be consulted as needed, and it will appear after the word or the phrase "Housing Commission." Yeah, 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 as appropriate. That's right. Are we okay now, Nicole? Yes? Okay. So we're voting on the amendment first. Any other questions? I'm just going to check with Town Council, is this amendment majority or two-thirds? Again, it's a majority? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Hearing no other discussion, we will... Yeah, well, I guess we are voting. It is open. Go ahead, sorry. Yeah, people were voting. I was talking. They were voting. That's good. And this has passed, 154 to 15. So now we'll vote on the main motion to approve the Community Preservation bylaw as presented, and it will have that addition in the motion. All right. Any other questions on Community Preservation Act bylaw? Okay, then we will prepare to vote. All right, and status is open, and this is stated in the warrant with that amendment as well, adding the Commission on Disabilities. And this motion has passed, 137 to 35. Thank you very much. Okay, so on to, we'll shuffle a page or two here, Article 27. Okay, "To see if the town will vote to accept and confirm the layout of County Road as a public townway as heretofore laid out by the Select Board and the location depicted on the plan entitled 'Layout Plan: County Road in Sheffield, Massachusetts, Berkshire County, dated February 24, 2025, prepared by BSC Group,' a copy of which has been placed on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise for the fee or easements in said county road as depicted on said plan for all purposes, for which public waste are used in the town of Sheffield, or take any other action relative thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move to accept and confirm the layout of County Road as written in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept and confirm the layout of County Road as written in the warrant. Article 27. Question?
Yeah, Peter Duma, 94, Pecorot West. Just clarification, because I thought at last year's town meeting, we voted to replace the bridge, so there was a done deal, so why do we have to do this?
Because there was a requirement that within so many days of the meeting, the layout plans had to be filed with the Registry of Deeds, and that did not happen. So this is a repeat to approve the layout, and we'll make sure that it gets there this time in the timeframe.
Any other questions about the layout of County Road? All right, seeing none, we will vote on this. And note, this is a two-thirds required to pass. And we're open to vote. Status is closed, and the article has passed, 164 to 6. Clearly, two-thirds. Okay, Article 28, kind of in the homestretch here. "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Sheffield zoning bylaws as follows, or take any other action relative thereto." Table of Regulations... Where are we? Section, I'm gonna... Yeah, it's all as printed in the warrant. We're going to hear from the planning board.
Robbie Cooper. So we held a public hearing on April 9th, where we voted as a board in favor of the article. So ultimately, what this does is, as it stands right now, in the commercial district, we do not allow construction businesses and related heavy vehicle storage. So this would modify that to allow it subject to a special permit.
I'm not sure I heard a motion to approve this. Were you making the motion, Robbie?
I'll, I move to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Sheffield zoning bylaws as follows, or take any other action relative thereto, in Section 3.1, 3.1, Table of Use Regulations for the Used Category Construction Business and Related Heavy Vehicle Storage, strike N in the commercial district, and replace with PB as written in the warrant.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you very much, that we amend our zoning bylaws as presented by the planning board.
Ken Smith.
Ken, Ken Smith?
Ken Smith, 465 Silver Street. I would like to amend the motion. I would like to add in the definition, "Construction Businesses and Related Heavy Vehicle Storage and Repair." The words "and repair" is what I'm adding.
Okay. Do you, do you have that, Ken? For the town clerk and for Nicole, please? And that's under Number 2, right? Am I in the right place? Yeah, definitions. Okay. Was there a second to that? Yes, okay, very good. Just to be sure. Okay, he's writing the motion. Other discussion?
Amy Murray, 95 Salisbury Road. Just a quick question. I appreciate, Rob, you giving us an explanation. Why is this the only article that doesn't have an explanation under if it's recommended or not? Why is there no layman's quick guide to what all of that says in the table?
This is an article that the planning board has to give a report on, any zoning changes, and so we've always left it to the planning board to give the description and the report on what happened at their meeting.
Okay, I think for those of us that are reading ahead or sitting here, and trying to then base a vote off of it, it would be great if that recommendation could be put in writing and added, because every other article has an explanation. So those of us that would like to read it, I think that ahead of time, that recommendation should be put in writing, just like every other article, because it looks different, and I think that we all deserve to see it in writing.
Of course. We certainly will make that happen next time.
Thank you for the suggestion, Amy. All right. How are we doing? Any other questions on zoning? Okay, so while we're waiting for that, what Town Council has suggested is, in the box, you see the different colors there on the bottom, under General Business Uses, we would be adding Construction Business and Related Heavy Vehicle Storage and Repair. So that's one place where we're adding the two words "and repair." And then the other place it will be added is under Number 2, under the definitions, where it's bolded, Construction Business and Related Heavy Vehicle Storage, again, and repair. So those two words are being added in two places. Are we good? I'll give it to Felicity. Yeah, in bold, yeah, it's, and add, and bold, and repair, in bold italics. Well, it's in the section under the bold. It won't be written in bold italics, but it will be in the definitional section and in the box under General Business. Two spots. Let me see. Add the language in. We're not going to add it in bold italics. We're just going to add that language in two places. It's not italicized in either spot. It is bolded. It's not italicized. Part, I think part of it is, with the clicker system, you wouldn't see the entire warrant article printed out, and so that's what's part of the difficulty here, where she's trying to describe where these words are being inserted. So while Nicole's getting that, I'll save a minute for at the closing, because what I realized, I've been asking everybody to please introduce themselves at the microphone, and when I started this evening, I never introduced myself. Julie Hannum, and I'm on home road, so I'm pleased to be your moderator tonight, but I totally forgot to say that when I opened. Are we ready? Okay, great. Thank you, Nicole. All right, we are voting on the amendment, so we're adding the two words "and repair" in those two places as described. Are we ready? Voting is open. The amendment has passed, 150 to 19. Two-thirds on that, and now we will vote on the main motion for the adjustment. Yeah, as amended. I don't see any other discussion, so I would say yes. Oh, excuse me. Hold on. Can you hold, Nicole? Yes. Okay, another question?
Amy Beanbridge, Jordan, 745 Ashley Falls Road. And I'm just curious as to why it was prohibited before, so that we would consider changing it to with special permitting?
Okay.
I don't think I can answer your question as to why it was a no. I'm sorry. The planning board took a look at it and decided that a special permit was, at least in place of the no, they would have to go before the planning board before they could do it.
Would anyone from the planning board want to comment on that, though? Perhaps they might have an idea.
No, I'll echo what Rhonda said. Just a discovery that we made, but we wanted to make sure that it was in line with, you know, in rural, we allow those types of businesses, you know, once again, subject to special permits, so we just felt that it would be appropriate for commercial districts.
Great, thank you.
I would just like to add that some of the original zoning was written in the 1970s, and the planning boards, after they've been working on them, have looking, been looking for things that don't make sense, and that kind of didn't make sense. You can do it in the rural, but you can't do it in the general business, so...
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we're voting on the main motion, and I would say we are ready to vote. Open on Article 28. The article's passed, 135 to 30, and again, this was by a two-thirds majority. Okay, Article 29, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Sheffield zoning bylaws as follows, or take any other action relative thereto," and this is concerning the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And again, this was submitted by the planning board, so we'll be hearing from the planning board.
Sarah Hoy, 60 Main Street, Planning Board. I'm going to ask if we can...
Sarah, can you go closer to the microphone?
Wow, okay. I'm going to make a motion that we pass over this article for this evening. Since we developed this bylaw, we, it's come to our attention that we should have some further discussion with the emergency, sorry, the police department, the fire department, and the assessors office in the town hall, so that we can make sure that the numbering system of the... system of the ADUs is consistent with the emergency services.
I second that.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded, that we will pass over Article 29 tonight for further work by the Planning Board.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have the motion before us, that we will pass Article 29. Yes, Article 29, "To pass over the vote to amend." Very good. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, we'll prepare to vote. Very good. All right, Article 30, "To see if the town will vote to adjust the property tax exemption amounts for senior citizens, under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c), to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2025, by increasing the exemption amount contained in the first sentence of this clause to $1,000, or take any other action relative thereto."
I'm happy to move to adjust this property tax exemption with no amendment for senior citizens under GL, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c) as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjust the property tax exemption for senior citizens as written in the warrant. Any questions?
Jennifer Goey, 71 Park Lane. I just have a question on when the last time the income limit was raised for the senior citizens.
The income level for this is set by the state. The town has no control over changing that, but in conversations with the state, I believe they're going to be taking a look at that in the next couple of years.
That would be great. Thank you.
They also list a cap, and that $1,000 is the cap that we can currently put out, which is why the number is way up.
They can't hear you.
The state also lists a cap on what that number can be, and that $1,000 is at the maximum of what they're allowing currently, but hopefully, they'll be revisiting that as well.
Great, any other questions? All right, we will prepare to vote. Voting is open for Article 30. One more. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,323,486 for the costs of acquiring and equipping a new pumper truck and related departmental equipment and assets, including the payment of any costs incidental or related thereto, and that this meet the appropriation authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow said sum under, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and in alternative, to authorize the Board of Selectmen, pursuant to the provisions of General Law 44, Section 21(c), or any other enabling authority, to enter into the lease purchase financing agreement for the acquisition of said equipment and assets, the term such agreement not to exceed 20 years, being the useful life of the equipment as determined by the Board of Selectmen, and to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum $423,000 for the first year payment of said, of such purchase, such lease purchase financing agreement, or take any other action thereto."
Madam Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement for the acquisition of a new pumper truck and related departmental equipment and assets, including the payment of any costs incidental or related thereto, as written in the warrant, and to transfer $100,000 from free cash and $323 from the fire truck stabilization fund for the first payment. $323,000, is that not what I said?
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded on Article 31. Discussion?
Hi all, my name is Daniel Baker. I live on Clayton Road. I am a firefighter and first responder for the town. I speak for my colleagues when I say, we have been to your homes, we have provided lifesaving treatment, we have been there when the people of this town needed us most. We are not firefighters because we want praise or respect. We are firefighters because we want to help. One of the largest issues we face as a rural fire department is getting water, often needing to draft from rivers and ponds. This new pumper will help us get the water that we need, when we need it. Help us fight fires and vote yes to Article 31.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Please vote. Article 31, two-thirds majority required as we borrow money.
While we're voting, let's thank Nicole for a great job on the computer tonight.
The motion has passed, 149 to 22. And as we prepare to adjourn, please let me remind you, town election is next Monday, May 12th. You vote 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. Lastly, see staff to turn in your stickers, your clickers, excuse me. Thank you very, very much for coming this evening. I will entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded to dissolve this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I declare the meeting dissolved. Have a lovely evening. We are adjourned.